Information is Josh Comstock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi Josh, I'm from Pride Incorporated.
Okay.
These are the final signed plans for the store down the street.
I thought we got those a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, we had to amend.
Yes.
The schedule, we, last week we voted, or last meeting we voted to amend the details of what plans are what, and then they were going to incorporate that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's all.
This is just a complete summary.
Yep.
Okay. This is the final, this is...
Three sets.
Three sets.
Why don't you turn that thing around?
So, just want to take a quick look to be sure.
Yep.
The deal was they're supposed to incorporate the decision in with plans, which they did, and now they've incorporated the amendment into the plan.
And this is just being signed or not?
Well, this is now supposed to be, this is the final thing, so when Tim Nyheart goes out to the site and finds something on the site that isn't on these plans, he issues a cease and desist order.
Okay. So do I sign one of these?
Uh...
Three of them?
Yeah, I guess you can sign like three and then, I guess, from Kim.
We keep all three?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, then you want to tell him, right?
Right, correct.
And everything's all set with that sign too, right? Over there, Junior? Just nine under project.
Yes, yes. Or, put an eighth thing, right?
Yeah. Each page with sign detail.
Sorry, we're on last repeat. Repeat. And once?
Repeat.
That's repeat.
Yep, so, three, three square feet, twelve square feet, twelve square feet. Yep. And they seem to have gotten their, they shrunk everything.
How far is that up to here? Where is that? What's the...
No, probably on second sheet, first sheet.
Do you mind the name wire now?
And then on C2, they do have a note that, that shows the build-out, but it says this application is only for the Pride parcel on these.
They don't have no intentions written out, they're all dead second partial, I don't believe so.
Sign locations on C2.
Oh, it's on the back side, okay. Oh, that's lost now, it's out there, okay, you have to go backwards here, okay, yep.
You don't have no directional signs on Bay Road entrance? On the Bay Road entrance? I cannot answer that. Surprising again. Are you allowed to put a...
Yeah, they're allowed to, they're allowed to put a directional sign here.
They don't show nothing.
But they don't show a directional sign in theory, but probably will be something at the front.
Don't they put it all on there?
Not necessarily the directional sign.
Might be on that sign.
Yes, right here. Right through entrance sign, right through exit sign, road sign, right there. Right through sign, right through signs.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have to have an extra set with you, do you?
No.
Okay. I was gonna say, if you had one, you can sign it right back, but there'll be plenty of copies around here, so.
Okay.
So we keep one, one to Tim. And I think, keep one at the site.
Okay, so that's the one.
Okay, take, take one back, keep one at the site.
Okay.
I'll give one to Tim, and we'll keep one, I'll give one to Tim.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I do.
You do.
Let's see, reading, we have an invoice to pay for PBPC, for service to Patona Padley for $735.12.
How much is that set?
Seven thirty-five, twelve cents.
Some more.
Six. That must be for the first. That must be for the last quarter, last, no. Yeah, seven to one sixteen to nine thirty, sixteen?
Yeah, it'd be the first quarter.
Sixteen?
Oh, well.
That's a mistake, that.
Or it's not. That should be a seventeen.
Yeah, it should be seventeen. Yeah, let's just double check here.
That's on, that shows it as sixteen.
That's sixteen to...
Two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
You can't pay it, two thousand sixteen.
No, you can't.
No, we can't.
Okay, my mistake, I, I was with my stuff to bring to the meeting, but I see that the posted beater date is the sixteenth as well, so I must have just had an old one lying around.
Okay.
So.
Okay, no problem.
Beautiful. Let's see.
Just draw on. Okay.
Hey, how come we don't get any more minutes or agendas to meetings?
Get the agendas.
What about the minutes?
I, I'm six months behind on the minutes.
Well, just as long as we don't get lost in a shuffle and no makeup.
Nope, they're...
We'll get in trouble.
They're stacked up waiting to be done, I'll be happy to...
How are you supposed to get Nyheart's secretary to help?
She's not helping with that.
No?
She's helping with mailings.
Well, why didn't you get her to help you type the minutes?
Because I have to dictate them first.
Yeah, well, you got the film there.
Yeah. Does like, does someone sound like they're volunteering, Johnny?
Do, do, am I what?
Volunteering to type them up?
No, you guys get the big box, I don't get none, so you might over and over. So I can say.
See, I distributed, uh, our, the pay stubs from the last payroll. The... Cutting a little time for your meeting starts. The, uh, senior center plans to file their plans at our second meeting in May? May fifteenth.
I think they filed the plans if the, if the building, the land of the building is supposed to sell is in litigation.
Well, they can file off. Uh, we may have to, uh, we may have to discuss what we're going to do about scheduling here. Uh, you know, certainly we, as with Mr. Roberts, we're scheduling a hearing for property, we're having a hearing for property he doesn't own, so...
I'd like to make a motion to have the chairman get a hold of Tom Gonzo and ask that specific question. There's a lawsuit pending at some things in front of the board. Do we act, or do we postpone it?
I would, might make more sense to have Mr. Dwyer ask that question. Do you maybe answer it, or ask it in a better legal terms, right here?
Okay.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I will, I will email Joel. Joel's been away anyway, so he's not, won't be available until next week.
Okay.
He's back, I told him tomorrow, next Wednesday.
Well, the only experience I've had with returning President Allegiant is when he represented us against Five Colleges Inc. And I think Five Colleges Inc. saw the writing on the wall, that's just an observation.
Okay, so we all know if we can even schedule a hearing pending litigation.
Do you make that motion, John?
Yeah, second.
Any, all in favor, any other special in the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Only four is zero one absent, depending how you vote, Bill.
Well, I'll, no, I'll vote aye.
Okay.
And, and gets something in writing, not verbal. I don't like his verbal comments, like, I asked him what's, what are we doing a year later? No, not years, two thousand sixteen. Last month, two thousand eighteen, he writes is on that land on the North Hattie Field. I don't go for that verbal stuff.
Kind of close to the... Okay, well, planning board, I'll read the announcement as it appeared on the Gazette. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, beginning at seven fifteen PM in the Hadley Senior Center meeting room. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Barry Roberts for special permits. Be not applicable. Site fine approval, business use and acroflow, erosion and sediment control, lock width, section four point three point seven, and vehicular access, section five point seven. Said special permits are for two proposed new buildings at 303 Russell Street, totaling twenty thousand five hundred sixty-three square feet. Zone industrial, application and plan to be used in the town court's office for no business hours. Published in the Gazette, April second and ninth.
Appropriately published.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Reed, attorney with Bacon Wilson, over in Amherst, here on behalf of 303 Russell Street LLC. The applicant with me this evening, Barry Roberts, the developer, and our civil engineer, Phil Henry, from Civil Design Group out of North Andover. So we're talking about 303 Russell Street, Keetsa Lumber, uh, property we've got, and existing conditions, even though...
Before you get in for it.
Of course.
Uh, I just want to make a statement for the record that I have filed a disclosure under General Law two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three. Just to put on the record that I do represent Dick Pizza, who is the former owner of the property in question, and who holds a mortgage on the property from the current owner.
Perfect. So I think you're familiar with the site. What we have is a, is a photograph showing what the site looked like before Barry got involved. Uh, and so just a little bit of the history of the site, you know, it was a, the Keetsa Lumber site. Eighteen thirty-six Development, Rayos, Jeff Waskevich had, has it under contract, had it under contract, had it conveyed to them, and had not done anything with it. Barry has it under contract to purchase from eighteen thirty-six Development. There was an existing order of conditions that allowed the demolition of most of the buildings. You'll notice if you've driven by, this building remains, but the balance of, these buildings are gone. The site has been graded, Barry's brought some fill from, I think, UMass, and also East Street Commons. There was, pick a four to five feet of wood chips all in this area here that he's removed and then filled in. Ed Wagner would go and remove all of the junk, debris, et cetera, on the site, and that was under an existing order of conditions. We've filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, we have had one hearing with them. We were continued to May eighth. We have a site walk scheduled for Thursday at two o'clock. They've got a peer reviewer involved as well, Bill Shikin out of Granby is gonna be doing that. Mickey Marcus from SWCA is...
Was this at site walk?
Thursday at two PM.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, yes. Really just to look at the, what Barry has done, and then also, you know, all of this degraded area, because there's a wetland right here, and that you'll see from the proposed plans, that we're looking to do some things in and around. There's also some contamination in that wetland, and so we've got to remove a good majority of that wetland and truck the, the material off-site because of the, it's under the remediation plan that we're gonna have. So that's, those are, that's the existing condition, and what we're proposing are two buildings. One fifteen thousand seven hundred sixty-three square foot building that you'll see here. It's at the northerly side of the property, and then about a forty-eight hundred square foot building towards the rear of the property. This, this one up here is gonna be a harbor freight, I don't think it's any big secret, I think we said it last time. Uh, and this one is going to be a Rayos coffee roaster, wholesale facility and retail facility as well. How big is that building? About forty-eight hundred square feet. We meet the two to one parking, there's about a hundred and ten spaces associated with this, twenty-one spaces associated with this one, for a hundred and thirty-one spaces altogether. And as I mentioned, we meet that two to one ratio. There, there is a twenty-nine percent, I think, open space. We do have a relatively clean letter from Berkshire Design, you did just receive it yesterday, it wasn't received a week before, and that was because of our delay in getting things to the peer reviewer. Phil and Barry had a meeting with Mark Stinson, who is the circuit rider for DEP two weeks ago, I think, two Thursdays ago. Just to solidify, and Phil will be able to talk about the drainage on the site, what it's doing, what it does now, and what it's going to do post-development. Harbor freight, seven days a week, eight AM to eight PM, about thirty employees total, mixed between part-time and full-time, four to five of them to be on-site at any one time. Uh, they'll have weekly deliveries.
You'd say they'll be twenty-four hours a...
No, 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 uh, no. Eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week. Seven days, four to five employees on at all time, but thirty, thirty new jobs really is what we're looking at. And what's the timeframe you're open till? Eight AM to eight PM. Seven days a week. And then you've got Rayos, which is gonna have eight employees, four to work the back, and then where the, the roasting happens, and then four in the office in retail area. Uh, they like more expanded hours for the roasting and the wholesaling, um, so really no restriction. They will have an after, I think it's called an afterburner. They'll, they'll have an afterburner at this site. I know that when we were here with Essalon, it was something that the chairman had asked with Rayos. I don't know about their existing, but certainly with this, they'll have an afterburner, they'll have an afterburner.
What's the nearest thing to that, school?
Steve Lewis, I mean, so you've got, it'll be back in this area here, so you've got the bike path, obviously, parking, and then probably the school, that Chinese immersion school there.
You got it. Yeah, you got a couple of houses, but they're quite a ways away.
Yeah, they're quite a ways, I don't even think they were...
Up by Lowe's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't even think they, they got the, the others.
So this site, this location is further away from those houses than the current location?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Correct. We have asked for some waivers, um, to allow a curb cut width greater than twenty-four feet, due to the site's location on Route nine. We also, we have to go through the DOT process, because right now there are two curb cuts. We're going to be consolidating and just having one curb cut about in this area. Uh, we've got our traffic engineer meeting with DOT, hopefully this week, to talk through it, and also, we understand that there's gonna be some road widening in this area, so we just have to figure out how that's going to affect this parcel, so we're asking for the wider curb cut. We haven't provided a traffic impact statement, we provided a, a traffic assessment, and we had provided at the Berkshire Design, and they came back with no comments. Um, I'm happy to give a summary of that, if you'd like. We are requesting waiver from strict compliance with the fifteen-foot landscape buffer and shade tree requirement along Route nine. You'll notice that here, we've got landforms instead of vegetation, so it'll effectively block the vehicles, but not the building, just so that there's appropriate sightlines to the building. Uh, and we think that based upon the balance of the vegetation that we're proposing, that, I mean, after you'll see that the site, there's a robust vegetation plan.
I was gonna say, the, uh, which way is north on that plane? Okay, so the west pretty much has lots of trees already.
Yeah, and I think Barry is part of the cleanup, there was a lot of trees.
The west is good trees all along border there.
Definitely.
Yeah, there, there are some there, there's also a billboard, if you're familiar with it, and that billboard is, there's a lease that we...
That's on your, on his property?
Correct, yeah. His meaning...
Roberts.
Yes, soon it will be Roberts, yeah, you'll see it here right along this, what's I think called Dawson's Creek. It was, it's deemed the perennial stream, I don't know if this happened as a result of the Lowe's development, but there seemed, from what I understand, to be in agreement that this is a perennial stream which carries with it riverfront. It's, um, there's a drainage ditch there, it was actually, there's a, a recorded document essentially a taking from the Commonwealth and Massachusetts Highway Department that has thirty feet, so fifteen feet on this property, fifteen feet on that property, and it had, they have the duty to maintain it. I mean, if you go out there, you'll see that there are two box culverts, I think is what they're called, under the road. Left, if you're looking at it, the left one's fine, the right one is just all silted up, and there's just nothing coming through there. We'd get in there if we, if we could, we're happy to, I think we'd have to go through the Conservation Commission to actually...
I'll tell you, that was my concern when you guys started, and it is now, and it will be, and it's not only that, it's the culvert, and I talked to the, tomorrow at the DPW, and he wrote that he, he would wanna see maintenance in that ditch, and he never looked at that culvert. Is that culvert clear?
Which one?
The one under the...
Under the bike path.
Under the bike path.
One of the bike paths is clear, the one that comes under Route nine.
One side.
It's all silted up.
Right.
Yeah. There was a lot of fallen trees that have fallen from both sides of the properties, from Rocky.
Right.
Telluride. Across, as you get farther down, closer to the culvert you're talking about, near the bike path.
I remember that thing as just a jungle, that's all.
That was one of the things.
And I got in and tried to, had Wagner use its arm to... I talked to Berkshire Design about this thing, about to, to actually clean that, and then I went to talk to Janet Stone, and she says, you know, that's a doable thing to get that done. And to me, while this is in, under construction, this is the time to clean that from that side to the bike path.
Yeah, and I think, we, we were out there...
We don't have any issue in doing that, except that I need to go into the riverfront area to reach in there. We don't actually have to go down in the water, but we've been using Wagner's big machine that can reach and lift it up. So, happy to do that, you know?
Berkshire Design seems to think you wouldn't have, because of what's going on there now, that you wouldn't have a problem getting approval from the Conservation Commission, and not have.
Yeah.
That's what he said to me today.
Yeah, we'd be, I mean, we'd be happy to, you go, if you go out there, remember, we were there Saturday morning. It's, it's nice how they cleaned it and almost brush hogged it here, then as you get back to this area, it's just all overgrown, and if you're making an investment in the property to, you know, beautify it, take it down, now...
Right, it would make property enhance the looks there.
Yeah, absolutely. And then with this, the, being silted up, I mean, if, we'll call the state, or maybe, you know, McMahon is part of their discussion with DOT about this road widening can mention it, I have a feeling they're not gonna wanna lift their finger at all, and so, you know, with the ready approval.
I was down there, they, they got a easement running right through.
Yep.
I was looking at all the drainage across Route nine and easements, and...
Yep.
The state has that easement. But it's on his property, that overgrowth.
Yeah, um...
No, about half of it.
Yeah, we'll see, that it meanders between the two properties, kind of along that property line.
Oh, I thought the property line was just on the other side.
No, if you look, the stakes are almost right down the center of the brook.
It is.
Does, does that show the layout of the brook, because that seems to be a wavery?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how accurate it is, but I know you can, maybe I'll bring this up so you can see it a little bit better, where the brook is meandering onto the other property and back over there.
Okay. It's mostly on your property, but still, a decent amount is on the other property.
Yeah.
There would be no, well, the state's got an easement in there anyway, so they wouldn't mind doing it.
Well, if they won't, they don't mind doing it, come on and, come on and do it.
I mean, if they want, they're, they're probably happy to have somebody do their work for them.
That's what I would imagine.
The only issue is getting permission from COMCOM to do it.
And, and, and from DOT.
Right.
Yes. All right, so, we'll make that a condition of your project, okay?
Sure.
They claim the Route nine culvert and, or whatever you wanna call that, the...
Forever street?
Perennial stream.
Yeah, as long as we can hedge that with the appropriate approvals, so that if they say no, then...
Obviously.
We'll request that John Comster, COMCOM, speaks with us.
Absolutely, all right.
Thank you.
Didn't throw you out, did I?
We're also asking for waiver of strict compliance with the landscaping island requirement, just because of the layout of the site. And again, I think if you look at what we're actually, you know, when you compare what's there now to what will be there, and I think you probably already see an improvement, we think that the...
Could you just, you know, picture the shoulder parking better? Picture the parking space on that, and does it?
It, it does, maybe we can bring it up.
How deep is the place, Brad, on that property? The plain? How deep do you hope to re-get plain, the plain?
Three feet?
Three.
We did Barnes the other day, twenty-five feet, we're still inside.
Really?
That whole area is white, I don't think it's just a blue plain.
And there's no percolation at all.
That's why it's good to really add that, brook in there to clean that, and then, because most of your property's gonna be all pure rock, right?
Yeah.
No penetration.
So I guess a couple of other pieces, we are in the aquifer, so we've got a letter from SWCA, and you've got a list of what harbor freight is going to store on-site, similar to what you'd expect at, you know, Lowe's or Home Depot, which are both in the...
General Home Chemicals.
You got it, that's it, yeah.
Nothing in, what do they call it? There's a word, but I can't think of the word, it's ORMD or something like that.
Oh.
General, uh, not in front, any significant part of this.
I get another issue with this project. I travel there all, every day, I go to the stadium for breakfast, and cars going into, into the car lot, they jam traffic all the time. Is there any way of making something so the cars, if they're turning in, they, they don't stop the traffic, they can pull to the side, is there any way of doing this? And going east and going west, that's gonna be a, I think that's gonna be a little problem there, because right now, every time Cindy goes in Subaru, or even the, the school, it backs up traffic all the way, you know? Sometimes that...
Well, what's the final solution for Route nine? Is there gonna be three lanes or four lanes? It's gonna be three lanes with a common turning lane, middle, middle, middle turn lane. So that should reduce...
One of that conflict, yeah, that conflict.
What is gonna, they're gonna do that?
Twenty twenty? I think twenty twenty is when they're projecting it.
Or twenty twenty-five should be done.
That, really, that's a, you guys going down there?
No, I know, I, I, I've seen it in the morning, especially going into the charge school, that's a big problem with the charge school, when they're trying to bring the students in early in the morning, and in the afternoon when they're dismissing, or... They have been doing like a staging lot in... like a staging lot at the, what is the direction of the road?
Pulse.
Pulse, but that's only a partial relief.
Wow. You know, I see people going, you know, you know, people going in picking up their kids, they, they get stuck out there, they get stuck in the parking lot.
Yeah, so we, we had a, a traffic engineer, I mean, I think practically you're right, and I think the, what's going to happen in Route 9 with that third turning lane, hopefully will alleviate a lot of the issue. Looking at the uses on site, we had, we had our traffic engineer take a look in there, based upon the uses, based upon the retail use, tool use in that front piece, and the rails in the back, they're, I think they're projecting 27 new weekday morning trips, 52 weekday afternoon trips, and 45 Saturday peak hour trips, new trips for each of those. So they're projecting 184 new trips per day, and they said, you look at Route 9, it has 19,700 average daily trips on that strip, and I think they, they measured it just west of East Street, I think is what they looked at.
What is, I'm sorry about that.
No, that was a...
What is the, does Harbor Freight have like certain times of day where there's more business than others?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm guessing in, I don't know the direct answer to that, I'm, I know myself, it's in, early in the morning before you're going to start the project and you run out to actually get what you need to get to finish the project. Based on what you see here, it looks like the weekday afternoon is the highest generator and not the weekday morning. So I'd guess Saturdays and weekday afternoon are probably the biggest ones, based on what we saw from the traffic engineer.
Is there any way going east, should be no problem at all going in, but going west, that's where the problem's going to be.
That's correct, and that's a problem.
And if there's any way they could widen that, that north side of the highway, just so if somebody's out in the middle road, they get, the cars can get around them, and that wouldn't, wouldn't cause a, a traffic jam.
Well, I don't know.
You know how they did that in front of Reggie's place there?
Well, I don't know if it's intentional or not from DP, from the highway people on Route 9, but the light is, they're staged so that there's a break in the traffic for, for people to go that way.
Yeah, but there's traffic, they're so bad, it's just, that's just a bad way.
Well, certainly, once again, it depends. When UMass is exiting, you know, 4:30, 4:30, that stretch is, is busy, but...
And it, it is a fact, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you could ask, but I don't know the deep, if the state has that or whatever on the other side of the street, they're probably going to say, well, the plan is this. I don't know, you could ask them, if there's something could be done.
Yeah, certainly.
About giving a little bit of a relief, making turns, left turns going west. I don't know.
Fortunately, there's a signalized intersection right past there that people can use.
They pull in the...
I hope they don't go shopping at Lowe's, or they come back to Harbor Freight.
Well, the, the trouble is the lights are here. What's, there's nothing really for lights at this point. They just, they went in that intersection there. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This, the westbound traffic is going to be the snarl in this project.
Yes.
Well, that's the, the state's problem, so to speak, because it's their road, they'll do what they want to do.
We, we can only request certain little things, but it is what it is. I mean, you're right. But I mean, to try to, try to correct the Route 9 traffic with this little project is, you know...
I suspect with something larger underway, they may not be cooperative in allowing, you mean, the project.
But you can ask, I can go ask and see what they say.
We'll make note of that.
Okay.
No, we're not asking you to build, rebuild Route 9.
But look what happened when the, Mass General, we did ask Lowe's to rebuild Route 9 in front of their space, and now that's turning into a race track.
Yes.
Oh, that's true.
You're in that left lane, and somebody behind you in a hurry, zooming.
That merges right after.
Yeah, you go, you go off...
Both directions.
That's the expression.
That's tough, yeah. A, a couple of other pieces, I'll get into the elevations, just as far as assessed value. The assessed value of this property currently is $488,000. I think for fiscal year 2019, it's like $498,000. Generates about $6,000 a year in taxes. Being conservative, you know, I looked at 220 Russell Street because I thought that might be somewhat of a comparable property to what's going to happen, and that's assessed at 1.5 million, which is about triple what it's currently being assessed at. So like, you know, you're looking at about $20,000, $18,000 to $20,000 in taxes compared to what you're getting currently at about $6,000. So not only is it going to be, you know, beautified, we're going to clean up what's been leaking there for 40 years. We're also going to increase the, the tax base here in Adley. I guess two other pieces that we should address. One is going to be the elevations and the signage, and then the other is going to be the drainage. So as far as elevations and signage, we've got, and those are, these are all rails, these are all Harbor Freight, we'll have to pass them out or however you want to do it.
Why do you think they got me, though?
There's enough for you. This one's kind of a, those are all the same, rails are all the same. These are kind of a work in progress. I don't think Barry's necessarily completely pleased with it, so we would ask just to come back at a public, take whatever input you have, but to come back at a public meeting, just to show you the final plans that we have. Cune Riddle Architects is a designer. Harbor Freight has a pretty well-baked floor plan that they like, and it's, you know, based upon where they lay everything out as far as fixtures inside the store. They've got it down to the inch, so they were pretty specific about what we could do and couldn't do.
They asked me to build a building 156 feet, three inches long.
They had it down to the inch of what they wanted.
Doesn't have to be that yellow color?
Oh, so for rails? No, I, I think, I think that's probably negotiable if it's something that the board doesn't want to see. I think that's Cune Riddle taking some liberties.
Somehow the yellow and blue just don't seem to...
It looks like a banana factory.
So this is not...
Some bananas.
This is a preliminary render.
Yes, yeah, I think we're, so typically Harbor Freight has big, sometimes they have big blue buildings, that's what they've been providing to us. We, Barry said, look at the manis, he really likes what the manis looks like with the horizontal clavards, the different sizes, and then transitioning to a smaller size. So that was somewhat of the directive to Cune Riddle. I don't think they necessarily captured it entirely with what you have in front of you. And also to maybe add some windows, even though it has no flexible windows.
Is there some blue?
That's the blue that we wanted to avoid, yeah.
Okay, so, just, maybe just stick with Harbor Freight for a second. They, they have no windows, the store is just...
That's what they prefer, but I think I would like to put some big windows outside that don't show inside.
They won't be functional.
Like Staples has.
Staples.
Correct.
I require to supply them with a smooth wall inside, obviously, so they can put their fixtures again.
Yeah.
But that's my requirement.
I don't have a problem, inside would look like it, but the outside, at least a couple windows to kind of, you know, Staples has a windows on Route 9, has a bunch of windows along Route 9, and they are only for, for...
That's what I would...
Yeah, that's funny.
That's what I would like to do, at least on two sides.
Yeah.
The north side and the west side.
Yeah, that's fine, I agree with that.
And then probably something along the lines of the color that you're seeing there for the Harbor Freight.
I don't have a problem with the color. It's blah, but it's kind of, that's fine.
Yeah, I think it comes down to textures.
It's like a neutral, neutral, neutral tone, and I don't, that, that, there's no color, yeah, but it's like a gray.
Grayish, you know.
It was supposed to be two shades of gray, but they didn't really make it.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll provide you what about it right now.
Okay.
That would be...
The blue and the yellow, I mean, that's a little, oh, ooh, that's different.
But animal.
Yeah.
I don't even know about that.
We'll certainly take that back to rails. But that's, that's the design they're looking for, it has a lot of functional space in there, there's...
For the rails?
For the rails, yeah. You know, retail office, and then back in the house, the warehouse.
So this is the way the buildings are going to stack?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, it's a probably really nice one to look at, and they've tried to incorporate a lot of the vegetation that you're going to have, what you see up here.
I mean, either building as far as the, the shape, to me is okay. See, I mean, it's, it's not out of harmony with the rest of the building.
Right, it's there in that area.
You know, just, just the color of the rails is a little bit, I mean...
Over charbrock.
It's a good way to put it.
That's a little bit bad. Actually looks better.
And then also, so signage, which is another pretty, pretty big piece of this. So we're going to end up condominiumizing this parcel, it kind of breaks itself up nicely. You've got this Harbor Freight piece, and then you've got this rail's piece in the back. So Barry has done everything he's done on the site in reliance on Harbor Freight coming in. We let them know that internal illumination was not allowed. They push back extremely, extremely hard, to the point where they, you know, and I don't know, quite frankly, if they're just fainting it and pretending just so we can try to get them whatever. I would like to think that, that if I go back to them and say we can't get it, that they're still going to be part of it, but my fear is that they're not, and they're being truthful about it, and Barry has spent all this money to redevelop it in reliance on what those lease payments will be on the back end. And so, essentially, I know we had talked about backlighting with them, they weren't, they didn't want backlighting. They asked for, and I think would, except, they would love internal illumination. So if we were to have a 64 square foot sign on the front of the building with internal illumination, I think they'd be fine with that. If it was...
But internal illumination, all of a sudden becomes blinking. It becomes, that's where we ran into problems.
Sure.
We approved internal illumination, and then you've got the LED lighting, then you've got the flashing, and the Rockies sign was a great example. It, it's, it's...
Yeah, I mean, and I think...
These are not going to flash.
No, no, they would just be...
Well, John, Rockies wasn't going to flash either, but they went back and they got the LED lighting with the flashing. Because they said internally illuminated, you didn't tell us.
Can we just declare that there's absolutely no flashing lights?
Rockies did that before we put the no LED system in. They, they, they put the LED sign up, and we did no LED flashing blinking signs afterwards, because of them.
Yeah, and they're not looking for flashing, blinking, anything. If you've seen other Harbor Freights, it's just really what you're seeing on the elevation that you have in front of you, and it would just, it would be 64 square feet, and only on that north face facing Route 9, internal illumination. And I think I could get them to even drop, because what they would, what they asked for, and what we've asked the zoning board of appeals for, for variance, is 64 square feet here internally illuminated, and 40 square feet here internally illuminated. I think that we could get them to say, if we could give them 64 square feet internally illuminated, we could probably get rid of this sign, they would love it, of course, but we could probably get rid of that sign altogether. Or reduce it, we, we would be willing to limit, we could limit this to 40 square feet, and it depends how you look at it. If you're allowed 64 and 64, take that extra 24, put it over there, and externally illuminate it.
Why do they want those to happen?
I have to imagine because of Barry Roberts, but also the trips along Route 9.
Well, well, when they, when you go to the...
They want them, they don't want them.
Well, when you go to the Westbrook Field Store, a lot of time in the last few years they've come, and they base a lot of things on the demographics, obviously. While we're on, so your zoning variance with the register schedule for tonight has been moved to Thursday. I'll just mention it, the zoning board meetings that are scheduled tonight and have been rescheduled for Thursday have not been posted properly by Mass General Law. Theoretically, the zoning board meeting tonight is an illegal hearing, and the way to correct that is to repost everything and reschedule it. Now, somebody has to complain about that for, to be such as the case. I don't know if somebody will or somebody won't, but all the hearing schedule, the senior senator, the various, a couple of apartments and bedrooms on buildings and this, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the reason it was not posted properly, state law specifically states that a public hearing, whether it be any public hearing scheduled, must be posted a minimum of 14 days and seven days in a local newspaper. This hearing for the ZBA, the hearings for the ZBA tonight were posted once on April 6th, which is 11 days prior to today. So it doesn't comply with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 11.
Forty eight.
Forty eight, forty eight, section 11.
So if nobody complains, then it stands?
Yes, they, they get away with it.
Are you complaining?
I don't know if you complain to the town clerk, or just to the board, or how you do that.
So if I may, I think under 48, section 17, it might be considered a procedural issue. So typically you have 20 days to appeal, but if it's a procedural issue, you have 90 days to appeal. They may want to just renotice it altogether, because to keep it open for three months would be...
That's four months before they finally get a decision.
Yes.
I mean, a final.
Yes.
This, this is putting us in a little bit of a difficult decision. From a historical point of view, the, in the past, people wanted bigger signs, the ZBA was giving them bigger signs, bigger signs, bigger signs, bigger signs. And it was really, so we went to the town meeting, and we asked for bigger signs, we got shot down completely. Then they still continued to give bigger signs. So finally, the planning board says, timeout, you're really circumventing the zoning bylaws. So we, as the board, said that we are going to appeal the ZBA's decision next time they do give a bigger sign. So we're put in the dilemma, are we going to be willing to sue again our zoning board of appeals if they do? Is there a legitimate reason for granting a variance? To me, it's a, it's, I don't know, I didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn, so I don't want to be a lawyer, but nevertheless, it seems like a, a stretch for granting a variance.
Yeah, I've not seen any hardship here, except they're not getting what they want.
That's, they...
Well, which ultimately gets, doesn't get Barry what he wants, and makes all the money that he, the, I think it's a financial hardship, where...
Does it count?
Well, the financial hardship does count.
Only if, if you need a financial hardship, but you also need something unique about the property that warrants a variance.
So if you guys are so worried about the ZBA, why don't you go there and be a ZBA member?
Well, you think it was coincidental that they scheduled a meeting at the time of our meeting?
One can say yes, and one can say no.
Okay. I think the issue is, it, it strikes me as hostile on the part of Harbor Freight to come to a town with established zoning bylaws and choose to seek to deviate from them for their, for no good reason. I mean, in Massachusetts, variances are intended to be rare, and they've got to know they have no basis for requesting a variance.
Maybe we disagree about the basis for the variance, just because I'm going to potentially be there on Thursday night. I, I would just suggest a couple of things to the board, understanding that's a difficult position. It's put you in, and I really tried to come here and not ask for the world, not ask for, you know, 90 square feet on the front and then another 60 square feet on the side, really just to pare it back to something that is allowed, the 64 square feet. And instead of making it externally illuminated, make it internally illuminated, and make sure it's not flashing or anything that's offensive. I mean, we just, they want to be able to have it on this, right on the parapet, static from the hours, 8:00 AM that it's open, to 8:00 PM when it closes. And if you look around at the surrounding area, you've got a lot of internal illumination. You know, if it's, if it's down, if it's around here, in a relatively, what I would consider historic area, maybe you don't want to have that.
Oh, that's pre-existing non-conforming.
And we can certainly appreciate that, but...
No, your client has to appreciate it.
Will there be a road side signing?
There will be. Proposed to be right here, 20 feet off the road, 15 feet high, 64 square feet in total, broken up between...
Once again, internally illuminated?
No, so that's... No, so that's part of it. We would be willing to do the ground mounted...
You're very generous.
Uh, would they like it? Yeah, of course. But, but again, the directive was, this, this is the sign.
So on, on, on this building, because of the size of the building and the complete lack of any other features in the building, yeah, I don't wanna fall into the trap of, of, of just playing, "Let's make a deal," when the bylaws crystal clear. But I'm less concerned about the size of the signage than I am about the illumination.
Okay.
Um, but that is, uh, I, first thing, I think it's more important to hold the line on internal illumination than necessarily on...
Size?
Size.
And I think, and we've had the discussions...
And Matt wasn't accepting.
No, they just...
Well, Old Navy said the same thing, and a couple of other stores said the same thing, and...
For whatever reason, I think they thought it would just wash out. So I had them go back and look at the external illumination, and, you know, I, I forget who I saw. It might have been variety with the number of gooseneck lights that they had. But I think that's what they would, if we had to go with something externally illuminated, I think they'd want something bigger than the sixty-four square feet, and they would just have those, the gooseneck lighting on top of that, um, pretty direct, and, you know, making sure that it illuminates what it needs to illuminate and doesn't...
Is there gonna be other lighting on the building? For example, like Texas Roadhouse pulled it on us, they had lights all over the place.
Well, there is wall packs.
Wall packs, but not like a...
When do they anticipate opening this building? When do they anticipate opening?
When? Um, I, so...
It's fast as we can build it.
So they're gonna occupy, they could be selling stuff by September?
Probably.
I'll tell you something about chief financial officers and corporations. They have the cash flow from this building built into their cash flows. They'd be very disappointed if this fell through because of a sign problem. I think they might, might come around pretty damn quickly.
And I would love, I would love nothing more than to stand in...
Is there any other place in Hager County that could put this building?
No.
No?
I mean, I think there...
No, probably is.
Where are you gonna put it?
Sure there is, but...
Put it out.
But they didn't put it there for obvious reasons, they wanted here.
You know, you guys are carpentry about all this. This is the business district, it's not here. What the hell is so wrong with that lit sign? It's lit either outside or inside, it's not flashing. What is the big problem? You guys make a big problem over nothing. That's a business district.
Yeah, this is what town meeting has given us as guidance.
Exactly, John, I mean, you, you're gonna find out. It's increasingly difficult just to have your will put on various developers the way you want to. We have to go through a town meeting. Town meeting dictates these things. And how many times have I said, "We have tried to make signs bigger," and the town has voiced their objection?
So don't do the right thing to go into the ZBA? What's wrong with that?
No, because the Z, I mean, if you read the letter of the law, well, we're not getting any...
No, and I, and I don't wanna...
Who are you dealing with when you're negotiating this? Is it some developer from the corporation?
No, it's, it's their real estate manager.
Their real estate manager.
Senior real estate manager, yeah. And like I said...
Ask him to go to the chief financial officer and say, "What are the cash flows you got built in for?"
You know, I, I just don't want it to go sideways for Barry. Like, that's what it comes back to for me, and I can understand the logic that everybody's making, right? But at the end of the day, he's laid out...
Let's, let's just leave the sign alone for now, we're wasting too much time.
Okay, and I'll, and I'll make, and I'll make one more point about the sign. I think, you know, so I, I had given Jim, I said, "It could go any," Jim Riley is the guy from Harbor Freight, "It could go any different way." But if I could get you an external illuminated, an internally illuminated sign, would that be it? He said, "Yes." Or a sixty-four square foot externally illuminated, and then he said a forty square foot externally illuminated on this side. So what that would only mean is, it's an additional forty square feet over your bylaw. It is externally illuminated. This would be forty square feet externally illuminated, and this would be sixty-four square feet externally illuminated.
Well, you know they're not gonna see the one on the side because of the billboard.
Let, let him finish.
Right.
Let him finish.
But just looking at, so when people, when the patrons pull in, you know, having a sign here to differentiate it from railers, you know, people probably will know what they're pulling into. They likely see it here, but if not, having some identification here, and that, the billboard is there for another seven years, I believe. And then I believe that lease is up. And at that point, either Barry can rent it out to somebody else, or more likely, he'll be able to take it down. And so I think really, the, the ask would be, that extra forty square feet here, all external illumination. So if we're, I know it's bigger, it's not bigger where we're talking about ninety square feet on the front, more.
Okay, back up.
Okay.
Back up.
I'm backing.
Back up.
There is, I'm gonna repeat what you just said.
Oh, boy.
In seven years, there's a possibility the billboard could be gone. I would be one hundred percent in favor of giving you two sixty-four square foot signs in that building to see that billboard gone. I would go to the ZBA and support you one hundred percent.
Yeah, this is getting...
Take rid of that billboard with two external illuminated sixty-four square foot signs in a heartbeat. In a heartbeat.
If we could make, find a way to get out of...
In seven years. Great, you're not gonna cancel the lease, it's gonna run its length. But if you could get rid of the lease, oh my goodness.
Yes.
That is one big ugly piece gone.
I gotta, I gotta...
I feel billboards like the Citgo sign in my apartment, just like... Well, that's, that's, that's landmark.
This is happening.
That's a landmark sign.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the intention, is to win that, 'cause I, I've looked at the lease. It was, it's an extremely one-sided lease. There really aren't any outs, there might be a couple, and if we can, we're gonna try, but after, once it expires.
Would you put that in writing?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
We've been, we've looked at the six... So you think they would go for two large, non-illuminated signs?
Externally illuminated, yes.
I, I personally, as one member, would support that.
You've got two members.
What? I was thinking for myself, you can make your own comment. Okay, so you'd have two people, I mean, I, I would be willing to bet some of them would jump on that one.
Okay.
To see that billboard gone.
That's a good trade-off.
Okay. And that's all we would, just to be clear, when we are in front of the ZBA, that's all we would be asking for, right? We're not gonna try to play, you know, mom against dad and go and try... Whatever it is, we know that we're here before you for the special permits. If what you say is what you've just said, then that's the max we would be asking for from the ZBA.
Excellent.
And if you don't, look out.
So the consensus is, we're happy with a hundred square feet externally illuminated if the billboard goes.
No, um, in seven years, hundred and twenty-eight square feet, two sixty-fours.
Yeah, that's a good trade-off.
Two sixty-fours.
Good job, Jim.
Did you read the art of a deal or something?
He's upset, okay.
He's got more time on his hands, he's retired now.
Okay, and so then I guess the last piece of it will be the drainage. Phil, thanks for being so patient. I'm gonna, I'll hand out...
Parking lot lighting?
Oh, sure, I'll give you that, that's the stormwater waiver. Parking lot lighting, you'll see, they're in red along that exterior, downcast, full cutoff luminaries.
Shoebox type lighting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
How do you poll?
Um, do we know that? Eighteen?
Is there any lighting gonna spill out on Route Nine in this project?
None. Maybe some from this to illuminate the accessway, but I don't...
We've got one pole right where you turn in, so you can see. That might go right onto the line.
Could need a waiver probably for a pipe of...
Pipe, also you can grant that.
We've also, I don't know if you've seen this, the peer review letter from fourteen. Fourteen? Fourteen.
Oh, okay.
Let's step ahead of this. All right, so I've done enough yap, and I think...
What do we, we allow, twelve, right, James?
Ah, that's the one, you, you gotta...
Type of, uh, poles? Fifteen feet, fifteen, fifteen feet.
Okay. That's good.
Can I keep that one? Good evening. For the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. We're the civil engineers on, on the project. I know Tom stole most of my thunder, but I guess I'll, I'll just focus on the stormwater, and I'm happy to answer any, any other specifics. But the, the stormwater is, is a bit of a story, and, and, and when we first got to the site, we did, um, we dug, we dug fifteen test pits across the site. As Tom had alluded to, we found a very small layer of fill, and then essentially endless clay. And then there was also high groundwater, too, which didn't help, ranging from twenty-four inches to about thirty-six inches. So two to three feet, we had, we had groundwater. And that was observed groundwater as well, so it could be higher during, during season. So we had a, we had a situation where because of the clay, we, we couldn't infiltrate. And, and even if we could infiltrate, you need to provide a requisite two feet separation to groundwater. And it's really four feet when you're using it to attenuate peak, peak flows. So that's what we had working against us. What we had working for us was that the site is, is clearly degraded. It's, it's, it's hard-packed, there's, there's impervious area. The underlying soils are very, it was a low, um, low infiltration rate, de-s soil. So we had that going for us. We were, we had a good, um, base to, to improve upon. So I actually reached out to, to Mark Stinson, and my initial conversation was to talk about how we could seek waivers from either groundwater separation or infiltration, because we just simply, we just simply cannot infiltrate through, through clay. And he said, "Focus your efforts on, on sheet flow, and focus your efforts on not collecting the water through, you know, traditional structures, catch basins, detention systems, and so on, and, and, and maintain a widespread flow of the water, thereby increasing velocity, increasing flow, and basically having it managed over a long stretch of, of, of linear feet." So what we did have working for us...
Did you say increase the velocity?
Decrease the velocity, sorry.
So you said increase.
Oh, sorry. Decrease the velocity. So what we had working for us was that, as you know, there's a, there's a stream running along the west side. This is Route Nine here, north is facing me, south is facing the trail. Here's the Subaru, and then here's the rental shop. So the, the, the stream crosses under Route Nine, and then meanders its way, and then through another, you know, stone, um, um, system. Culver underneath the rail trail, running from north to south. But our site flows essentially from, from east to west. So we were able to, um, take advantage of the fact that, that, that the flow in the existing condition is flowing in one direction. Thereby, um, it, it actually helped us with the, with the, um, future development in managing an analysis point, which is this area right here. So everything flows from, from east to west, and then from north to south through, through this area here. So what we did was, we, we essentially focused on, on sheet flow. We actually followed up and met with Mark Stinson, and he, I know we don't wanna speak for him, but he, he did generally agree with our approach, and he issued, uh, DEP.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
So essentially, the way the stormwater is managed, there, there's a high point here, and then all, all of this runoff sheet flows this way. This is all curved to direct water, and all the contours are directing it around, around the building, around the north side. Along the westerly side, it's, it's, it's all sheet flowing straight down. And then here, it's all sheet flowing either into this internal wetland that we're maintaining or down through, through here. This wetland system, uh, there's an existing twenty-four inch, um, pipe that is clogged. It's substantially degraded. We are, we're proposing to replace that and, and allow this to flow freely.
What is that pipe there, goes, goes right to the brook?
Right to the brook, yeah. There's an existing, um, driveway now that goes over, uh, over, between this wetland and, and this wetland here. You can see it's channelized right here. And we're gonna be proposing to, to replace that in kind. Also, along the Rouse Building, there's another high point here that, that allows water to sheet flow around, and so on here, such that this is all curved, because it's all high, but all along here is no curb. And what, and what, and what the water's gonna be received on is a stone, like a peystone area, two feet wide, okay? Which is gonna be very flat. And then, and then downstream of that, there's gonna be a vegetated strip of about twenty-five to thirty-five feet. And that will allow the water to be treated, slowed down, cooled off, off of the asphalt. And then essentially, that, that peak flow, if you will, will be, will, will, will be forced to run over in a linear footage from here to here, as opposed to going through a pipe. And that's what Mark said to focus on. Ironically enough, we, we actually did meet the peak flows. The two ten and the hundred are substantially met, and we had provided that to Berkshire Design Group. And again, I don't wanna speak for them, you'll see in their letter. They didn't, their final draft did not have any stormwater issues. And I had spoken with Mark Donald, right? And the only outstanding issue was that when, because of, we're proposing to, to fill, um, wetlands here, and, and a section of the existing wetlands here, we were, uh, proposing to replicate, uh, wetlands in this portion here, which is highlighted by this, by this area here, and this area. We had mistakenly counted that as open space, when we should have applied it to, to the wetland. So that, so that open space number, which we originally submitted as thirty-six percent, actually went down to twenty-nine percent, but it still exceeds the twenty percent requirement. So it was a, you know, a numerical area that...
What's your, um, elevation on your invert of the state and the invert in the box cover?
Here?
Yeah. And then add the box cover.
It's about one forty-three here. Down here, you're looking at, I don't see an actual invert, but the contour directly adjacent to it is about one thirty-six. See, about seven feet of grade change across, I think that's four, five hundred feet. Yeah, it's plenty of pitch, but it, but it's also not raging either. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a good meandering greeny flow.
Very reasonable flow.
Yeah.
So actually, does the peystone and the grass gonna act as the filter?
Exactly.
Of dirt and silt and stuff like that?
Yeah, and, and actually, Mark, Mark was very pleased that we were utilizing that, and that, 'cause that's a specified practice in the DEP stormwater handbook.
What kind of, um, is that a special kind of grass, or, or bushes, or whatever?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be, um, I have the landscape planter that I can show you. We're, we're not the landscape architect, but, um, there is a substantial amount of vegetation being, being proposed in this area here. So everything that you see here in green is gonna be revegetated. And like I had mentioned, that's about twenty-five to thirty-five feet on, on average. So you can see here, there's, what, what you do see here is the actual trees that are gonna be aligned along the edge, and then everything that's in grass is gonna be a seeded mixture. And again, that, that's, that's intended to, you know, treat the water, promote...
Does it grow higher, or does it stay?
Some, some, it varies. So some of it will be trees that will obviously grow, and some of it will be low-lying grasses that are meant to just lie there. And some of it, some of it along the edge here is proposed to be mown grass, and then as you get closer to the wetland, you just leave it natural.
In that breakaway in between, what is that, that's a swale?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, what you see here in, in white, which is between the, the green and this black line, that's the existing wetlands.
So that's a swale going towards your...
This is an existing wetlands running this way and this way.
So you still have, you still have one more meeting with the county?
Yes.
To get this all addressed?
Yes.
Okay, fine, one more.
Steve Lewis, do they drain their water onto this company?
They, they, they have, um, their, their parking lot drains to what I believe is inlets, catch basins, and then is, is detained through a subsurface structure. And then they are actually piped, and they come along the southerly edge of the property line and discharge right at this outlet. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct.
So, so they do use, um, a portion of our property, but, but it's below grade?
Is there an easement there for them to do that?
There is.
That's all piped, right?
Correct. Yeah. I think when Barry was out there, he could go...
I think it's the thirty-six inch pipe that comes out right before it goes under the bike path.
Yeah, you could actually see... Yeah, you can actually see the head wall here.
The only letter we got from anybody in town, I'll give that to them. We got an email from Marlo, the Marlo Warren, the DPW Director, and he says he's reviewed the plan for 303 Russell Street. They look good to me, except for one comment. The drainage plan shows the overflow spilling into a drainage easement that appears to be on the property. I reviewed the site last week, and it looks like the sealed area could use some maintenance. I believe it's a Mass DOT, but so I think he's talking about that.
Yeah, this area.
That wall right up there. Okay, that's who we're talking about. That's-
The maintenance of the ditch or the maintenance of the catch basin there?
The maintenance of the ditch, because I talked to him this afternoon.
Yeah, and as we discussed, the northerly culvert is blocked.
Right.
So before the down end of the stream, there's a lot of debris of looting, as we talked about getting-
So is that going to be one of our conditions or is that going to be Conservation Commission-
Well, we can put in a request that they make the best efforts to obtain DOT and Conservation Commission approval to work in there.
Are we going to send a letter to the Concom?
That'd be nice, yeah. That'd be great.
Bill?
Yeah, we can, oh, I give them a copy of our decision when it gets filed.
But if we-
Well, we may not have a decision, so we may have to continue this, so what we really should do is-
I'll email.
Okay.
James, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So we've got a few outstanding issues. The signage is one. The whole, I mean, really, it's really only the drainage thing is really the last one. And proper delineation of however the replication is going to work. That's why it changed stuff.
So after Concom?
Yes.
Yes.
The water issue, did you make an error when you said it came from Lowe's? I thought this is more Home Depot, Mountain Farms Mall.
Yeah, and it was just, it was more of a, what I had understood from Mickey Marcus based upon, I don't know if this, because this meanders here, and then I think it comes back over here at some point, but I think it does come from there. I don't know if there is any 200-foot riparian zone with this.
Lowe's goes pretty much to the west, and there's a culvert there.
Yes. And it joins on the other side of the bike path, yeah.
The culvert where they go to the drive over, they go under Route 9 there.
Or for clarification, the stream that goes behind Dunkin' Donuts that comes from Home Depot and takes the drainage from Mountain Farms Mall. Is that the one that would go along Route 9 and here?
Then, no, that goes right behind the Four Seasons, and then it cuts over.
That's correct. Where's it cut over?
It crosses by that, I think by the Chinese place there, and then cuts over and goes, there's a small brook that runs out through ours that way.
This runs-
It doesn't go into this thing.
Yeah, no, this one's somewhat standalone.
Lowe's comes in here, here, right.
I mean, east of that.
Yes, yes, yes.
And the next one goes down by a pump station.
Over here, and they come across.
Right.
All right.
Water with allage flooded in the back after that rainstorm has passed from the Monday and stuff.
Really?
Before it by, by the Ford River, because you drive along-
Oh, okay.
-South Maple Street.
Yeah.
Because they go, I drive that route almost every day on my deliveries.
Yeah.
And that place was well underwater yesterday.
Yeah. That was a lot of rain.
It was. It was a heavy, goopy rain, too.
Well, that was snow piles. We probably blocked it since they blew a little bit before it built up for a short period of time. Because today, when I went through there, it wasn't bad at all.
It was fine to go by there today.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
So we're going to have to continue the hearing. But signage is one thing, and really, to the, we can continue it for two weeks from tonight. When is your next Concom meeting?
May 8. Obviously, we'd like to avoid the planning board meeting when the senior center plans are being submitted, but if that's what we've got, we'll be there.
Well, if it's just submission of plans- Submission of plans, it's not like it's public hearing.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
I mean, all of your opponents here tonight.
Are they going to come in with a plan for a sign off the street?
Yeah, I can provide you everything as we've just heard it with external illumination there and show it to you, the external illumination and the size here, and then you'll have it on your Rayos plan, but the external illuminated, you know, 40-square-foot sign there. But yeah, we can certainly provide the signage.
So you feel reasonable confident that too large external illuminated sign might-
I don't have much of a choice, but yeah, yeah. I think you've been very generous and reasonable in this.
We'll see if Harvard Brader agrees. Hopefully, they will.
He's gone the little horse train.
That's, yeah. I know.
Okay.
Okay, so signage, wait for Concom, and to see if any of this, because this is a pretty robust wetland replication plan. I mean, we're only disturbing 4,800 square feet. It's two to one in Hadley, so we'd be under 10,000 square feet. This is 13,000 square feet. So I think, you know, to Phil's point about, just into Mr. Michikowski's point about the efficacy of this, I think it's going to, this is the way it all drained and sort of had those wetland plants there.
What did you mean with DOT on the highway stuff?
I think this week is what it's supposed to be. We had McMahon reach out to District 2. They were looking to schedule it for a day this week. Wasn't today. I don't know if it'll be tomorrow. If not, it'll be soon. They've got a good relationship with-
Is DOT the same as the ones for cleaning the culverts? Maybe? If they have any questions, if they need any comments from us, they can contact Bill or myself.
Okay.
In my opinion, the real estate guy's year in bonus is very much going to be affected by whether this thing is up and running. Trust me, you have a very practical approach.
I appreciate it.
You've got the doctors, the lawyer, the construction guy, the engineer.
Like a bad joke.
You've got a really, really fighting for it.
Yeah, we've got to tell Phil Henry, we're not the hicks from Hadley.
We had him in Amherst a couple weeks ago.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I still listen, Hadley is nothing like it.
Did he get a treat over there?
Yeah, we were in at 11 o'clock at night. I said, "Hadley is nothing like it."
Right.
So, he knows.
He was in Amherst, get a bottle of aspirin.
Do you guys realize, as an aside, that the planning board salaries and part-time wages in Belchertown total about $94,000? And this board gets paid $2,300 in total? Am I missing something, Bill?
The planning board in Belchertown gets nothing.
Oh, yeah.
That is the planning director.
Director, excuse me, director. I misspoke, yeah. Now, what's the population of Belchertown?
Lot of land, not a lot of people at all, I think.
Well, there's quite a few people. They just, they, they, they-
They could be 9,000?
Yeah.
That's a big, high school.
What is your Concom meeting?
May 8. And Johnny, you're more than welcome to come out on Thursday.
What time is that?
2:00 P.M. It's 2:00, 2:00 in the afternoon. It's probably going to be wet, so wear your boots, but-
You always wear your boots when you're around town.
Didn't you tell me Belchertown took some of the land that was part of the quarry?
From some of the towns in the harbor.
Yeah. Where did Joe Zagroni get his first dog? This is a trip.
So actually, in two weeks, we're going to continue your meeting for the, oh, you got the meeting, the meeting was at the Concom. It'll be the 15th week we're going to continue it, huh?
That's what we're going to do, that's what we're going to do. And that can give us time after the 8th, assuming we're approved there, to make any other changes to the plan, so we'll have a final set by then.
And so the 19th is when you put your ZDA, correct?
This, yes, Thursday.
Thursday evening at 7:00?
Yes.
I will go. And even if they have to repost it, at least I can make that comment so it's irrelevant with the reposting odds of planning boards. My, first one before I say that, as a planning board, other than everything we discussed about the 264-square-foot signs, and eventually, seven years from now, the billboard is gone, is that a, is my comment about that appropriate for the rest of you to agree with?
Not eventually, that is the deal.
No, no, what I mean is, in seven years, the billboard is gone, they get 264-square-foot external buildings, externally illuminated building signs, ranked by the DVA. I know you're in favor of that.
Yeah, that's-
I'm not opposed to that.
It's a reasonable compromise.
Okay.
Would have written agreement.
Obviously, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, when you consider the site and the work they have to go through, the, it's laudable how well, of course, the lawyer presented the case, but as well as the engineer-
Don't give them too much credit.
No, but-
You're watching around, you'll see.
It's just one, that's a tough site.
You can't pay them enough.
That guy, you won't, you'll be out there at 9:00 somewhere. You won't ever give a lawyer that.
No, it's a tough site. I mean, it's incredible. I mean, what, if this doesn't go, what do we have there?
It looks, even though it's, it looks like a big water pond right now, it looks so much better than it had for the last number of years.
I couldn't believe the two humps of concrete we took out of there, one up by the original building. They must have had a planer mill in there because, and concrete must have been cheap because they just, man, that thing was eight foot by six foot.
In the front building?
Yeah.
They had a huge planer in there.
Yeah.
Because we had my cousin cut some trees down almost 40 years ago. He was, he's into woodworking, was a big maple tree. And we planed it, and the boards were just about three foot wide.
Wow.
And they were two, they were two and a half inches thick, and they plained them. They were, I don't know, 16 feet long, whatever it was. There must have been, I don't know how many we plained. This planer, I mean, you're talking 40 years ago, noisy. This thing was a monster.
Well, they had concrete under it all the way.
That's why, it didn't vibrate that it came away.
Back in, the concrete wasn't that much money.
Right, just backed the truck up and keep dumping it.
Well, thanks very much.
Our Hadley Hall's still there, Barry. Our Hadley Hall's still there. We want to put your magic touch together.
Okay. Okay, good. So here it continues to the 15th of May.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have the zoning amendments. This is, yes, the Hadley Planning Board will have the public hearing on Tuesday, January 17th, April 17th, 2018, beginning of 7:15. Begin at the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room. Focus the hearing to review the following proposed amendment to the Hadley zoning bylaws. Amend the senior housing overlay district section 47.5 point B affordability requirement by referencing it to the inclusionary zoning section, section 25, and permit section 25 by incorporating the senior housing affordability requirements into it and to eliminate the option of the housing trust fund in both sections. Complete that to the zoning bylaws and math may be viewed during normal business hours. The clerk's office published 2 and 9 of April in the Gazette. And just for everybody's reference, this is the actual changes that I have proposed to put into the-
Town law.
Town law. And that's all based on the section of the affordability of senior housing that Larry gave us, the yellow and the red sections between the two of them. They're eliminating some or adding words to the others. And so I just went through each of these and took the different sections and said either erase this or add this or change this, or whatever it might be. That's what this is about. I hope I didn't miss anything. And the big one is to eliminate the housing trust fund as an option, at least for the time being, until we decide that's a good idea or a bad idea.
I think, I mean, you made, that's a good explanation. We'll get this so it's in conformity with both.
Yeah. Basically, what it comes down to is we have the inclusionary section, all about affordability housing, and the senior overlay, the senior housing bylaw, and they both had a little bit different wording for inclusionary for affordability. So now the senior housing directly references the inclusionary zoning for affordability and eliminates the housing trust fund, so that they're very now, they're now very consistent with each other.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, you probably, if anybody's been watching our meetings, you have seen us go back and forth on this housing trust fund. And for the time being, we're taking it out of the bylaw. It's not even going to be allowed until we can decide whether it's good or bad for the long term, then we could put it back in or not.
Yeah, but it is also just important to mention that the single reference to the affordable housing trust fund in section 25 was put in there because at the time we adopted section 25, the inclusionary zoning, we had a separate article to create a housing trust fund. That article was withdrawn at town meeting. The housing trust fund was never created. So it's not that we are scrapping a housing trust fund. We're just scrapping a reference to a housing trust fund that doesn't lead anywhere.
That doesn't exist anywhere. Right. Okay. So just give a motion to recommend or not recommend this for the town meeting on May 3rd?
Yeah.
May 3rd?
Yeah.
May 3rd.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion passes unanimously. That's it. That's the only zoning article on town meeting, because everything else that we're looking at has to be operating fine. For the fall town meeting, we will have a marijuana, recreational marijuana zoning bylaw or something about it. And what other thing do we have?
The MS4 drainage.
Oh, MS4 drainage, yeah, that's another one that-
Stormwater.
Stormwater drainage to comply with the new MS4 in the state. We're going to, we're already making sure people, any applicant complies with it, even without the zoning change, we can enforce that, just a matter of probably doing it for the long term, whether it's zoning or handling.
You know, with medical marijuana, this is a legal question. There's something in the news that some judge is telling the legislature to rewrite the medical marijuana so you don't go by pounds, you go by plants.
I haven't heard anything about that.
It was in the news today, so.
Well, they referenced that in a few different ways. It was like 100,000 square feet growth is one option, is one idea. Then they have selling it by pounds and ounces, personal growing it by plants, so that it's, maybe that's what it's about. It's all over the place.
That's correct. It's not consistent. That's correct. And they want to, kind of, for the growing, they want to have plants, so you can't, how many pounds is this going to?
I mean, 100,000 square feet, that's a, how many plants? I mean, depending on the farmer, they could either make it, well, of course, maybe they can't make it super dense because it wouldn't be due to put out on a road. I don't know. That's, that's, that's for the, powers to be, to worry about a lot of.
Just a note, the history, Barbara Bush passed away about 10 minutes ago.
Who?
Barbara Bush.
Oh.
Is that a report on her?
That's what you do in our planning board meetings, is look and watch.
I heard, yeah.
Board, I guess.
You know, just a note, Bill and myself attended a Meekmore Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I found it very interesting, and a woman talked on that affordable housing. And there are so many different categories and groups in the state of Massachusetts to apply for monies for this. And one thing I liked about it, population under 7,000, they had there that there was a town could apply for an ambulance. So I called her today on that, and she didn't return the call yet, but I'm going to chase that down because the town is-
One option, some of these grants are not directly to support the creation of- Some of these grants are not directly to support the creation of housing, but to support upgrading infrastructure. So ambulance, extending a sewer line, extending a water line are all options.
That lady was very knowledgeable and just...
So I sent, I forwarded the PowerPoint slides from that meeting to all of you. They're very good.
Do we do anything with this 60, what are we doing with 61B?
Uh, no.
That's the, the...
The 61D, 61A, and 61 notices have to go to select board, Conservation Commission, planning board assessor, and the state forester.
Okay.
Uh, but only the select board can exercise, can vote to exercise 61. Write a first refusal.
Okay.
What, I, somebody asked me a question. If a farmer has solar panels, is he eligible for 61A?
If what?
If a farmer has solar panels on his field, if he traditionally farms, he can get, if he has five acres or more, you can get a reduction in your taxes, so it would not be... But what if you have solar panels on? Uh, you'd have to direct that to the assessors.
Okay.
That's not...
Right, that's what I...
Yeah.
Certainly a change of use, isn't it?
Pardon?
Certainly a significant change of use.
Sure is.
Electricity from the use.
Well, I guess it depends on whether, if you put in an entire solar field, a commercial field, you have to take it out of 61A. Uh, when the field, well, ones the alleys farms are putting up and the one that is off of Huntington, we had to withdraw that portion from 61A. But if you're just talking about adding, you know, a couple of panels to the small scale, I don't know.
One of our little solar panels were working the last five, six days.
I do know that the APR program will allow solar panels, to a limited extent, you have to apply directly to them, and if your land is in APR, the solar panels can only be in support of that APR land and sized to reflect your usage on that land. So if you have a, if you have field crops and you don't have any building on that particular parcel, you can't put solar there. If you have a dairy operation, you can put solar on APR land to support your usage.
Correct.
But that, under the 61A program, if, if it's a five-acre partial and you're taking two acres out of, for solar, then you're going to take that whole parcel of it, six, seven acres?
Probably. Uh, that's...
But if it's 20 acres and you put two acres, well, that's how you take, withdraws two acres.
Well, I guess, again, we have to talk to Dan. We can't really speak to that because that's a tax decision. So the assessor's office would...
So they got all the guidelines for that?
They should.
The actors?
Sure, you can check.
Okay. Anything else? I have nothing.
I have nothing else.
Anybody, anything?
No.
Wanting to adjourn?
Simple.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting history, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Answer your question, Mike.